Good evening. I'd like to call the October 2nd, 2018 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we sit down, folks, I was wondering if we might be able to pause for a moment of silence in memory of Ray Naidow. So, under my announcements tonight, I have a few certificates of appreciation. First, I'd like to start with, we have two Eagle Scouts. One is Massimo Fantane, and the other is, I'm sorry, I'm killing the names yet, Maxwell Posma. So if you two boys could step up.
Actually, Maxwell's parents are here for him.
Excellent.
Because he is in college.
That's awesome. So, it's quite an honor to have you guys actually hit the rank of Eagle Scout. I know there's a lot of hard work and dedication and some great projects that came out of it, with the very controversial bridge project that you did, and the work across the street over at the memorial was actually fantastic. Both projects came out very well. So on behalf of the town, I'd like to thank both of you guys. Well, your son, please can pass it along. Massimo, if you want to come up and grab yours.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, bud. Nice work.
Thanks.
And if you could pass along the congratulations from the Board of Selectmen to your son as well.
I'm welcome. Tell him awesome job.
Yeah, he said "thank you very much." He wishes he could have been here tonight, but he's just a little too far away.
No, that's okay. It's more important.
He's at Quinnipiac University.
He's a little too far away.
Did he declare a major?
He is majoring in history and wants to be a teacher.
Oh, fantastic. Good for him. Well, tell him best of luck.
Thank you.
So, and we would also like to give a certificate of appreciation for 18 years of volunteer service to the Town of Douglas as a member of the Board of Health and the Board of Health Agent to Joseph A. Yosino. Thank you for all of your service.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Can I just say that he's going to be terribly missed by the staff.
Going into retirement?
Yes.
That's all I have for chairman's announcements. Is there anyone here for anything that is currently not on our agenda this evening?
We're on the agenda. Sorry, we're on the agenda.
You're on the agenda.
They're not.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the board. My name's Ron Tatro. I'm a former resident of the town and a former veteran service officer for the four towns, Douglas, Upwood, and Sutton Sutton. Tonight I have John Zipkak with me also. We're both members of the VFW, longtime members, and what we're here tonight is to present a proposal for updating the WWII Monument and Carter Square in town. Right now, we have a monument on the square, and it's a monument that memorializes everyone that served in WWII. But there's nothing there specifically for one and only son of Douglas that died in combat in WWII, and that's Michael Carter. Michael Carter was part of the 77th Infantry Division, specifically the 306th Brigade. And for those of you who don't know, that division was involved in a battle where they actually had a unit called the Lost Battalion. And of the 500 men that went into battle in Argonne in November of 2018, literally two weeks before the war ended in Armistice, Michael Carter was killed on November 5th.
Woodlese. Woodlese, these men.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So what we propose is we memorialize Michael Carter by giving him his own monument there. We were donated, we had donated to us from the Town of Northbridge, a stone that had a plaque on it originally for Lance Corporal Perrin, who was killed in Beirut in 1982. They moved the memorial in Northbridge to the bridge, his memorial, and that stone's been left on the corner by the town hall there in Northbridge for about five years. I contacted the Board of Trustees for monuments and memorials in Northbridge, and Dan Benaway, the chairman, has said that they'll donate the stone to the Town of Douglas. So what we propose is that we move the stone that's in Northbridge now to the square, and on the fourth page, you'll see where I have an overhead of the square, and you can see, what we'd like to do is place the stone in front of the flagpole itself, so it doesn't take away from the actual monument that's there now, but it does put something separate from Michael Carter. And then the last page is actually what it would look like, so we actually were able to Photoshop what that stone would somewhat look like in front of the flagpole. The monument that's there now was dedicated in the early 1920s, and really, if you looked at old pictures of town, the Huttnax House was in the background, the flagpole was a little crooked at the time, I mean, really, nothing's really changed since the early 1920s in almost 100 years. So what we're proposing to do is straighten out the flagpole, paint the flagpole, and put this stone there for Michael Carter. We're hoping to do it Labor Day, I'm sorry, Veterans Day weekend, which is the anniversary, the 100th anniversary of the end of WWII. And as it looks like right now, even with the short suspense, because we just got the stone donated, I contacted Tom from Whiten's Monument Works, and it looks like we should be able to get everything in place to be done by that weekend, with your approval, of course. And that's what we're here for today.
Sounds like great ideas.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, it's nicely done, too.
Thank you.
So, will we need a formal vote on that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Made by Mike, seconded by Tim. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'll make sure I notify the board with any of our finalized plans that you can attend the ceremony.
That'd be great. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Okay. So that brings us to item number one, which is refunding bond issue. So I believe Jean is here that can speak to that.
Can you share?
I guess he's not sitting in the middle. I'm sorry.
I'm going to have a microphone.
I'd like to thank the board for having us in this evening, and to introduce Clark. Clark is our financial advisor, and he's going to be giving you an explanation on the refunding of the bond issues. And you all know Cheryl.
Cheryl's our treasurer.
Well, thank you for having us tonight. I appreciate the time, because this is actually, I think, a very, an important meeting to have. As you know, we're proceeding with the refunding of the school bonds issued in 2011, and besides knowing that, though, I'd like to give you a little preview of what we're looking for savings, so you find that you're comfortable how we're proceeding, the target amount of savings, and are happy with us proceeding. Right now, we're looking at refunding approximately $14 million of bonds, and we think there's probably going to be, and I'm planning a little bit in excess of $700,000 of budgetary savings, and probably around $700,000 of present value savings. That's about 5% of the amount of bonds being refunded, and industry standards, that's a pretty good refund. There's no problem with that. It's not like, as if it's going to be, I'm surprised to anybody, they refunded it this amount. But that being said, I think it's still important that you realize that's what we're targeting. I always like to think my numbers may be a little conservative, so I'll keep my fingers crossed, but we also look at interest rates going up. The plan will be to sell the bonds at the end of the month. We're still targeting, you're talking about a couple of different dates when the actual sale will occur. It will be a competitive sale, and then we'll be back for you folks to take what will be Bond Council's formal vote. The other part of this request is that you take this first vote tonight, and that's a little bit of something I like to do primarily, because it protects the treasurer. It's perhaps something that's not generally known, but the general laws, but town meetings authorize debt, except boards of selectmen authorize refundings. And thus, what typically happens when a refunding is done, that the actual formal vote of the board, including the authorization of the bonds, happens when all the documents are be signed. And I don't like that particularly, because several days before the actual sale has occurred, and underwriters expect an award that day, and the treasurer will have signed a written certificate of award, the underwriter thinks the deal is done, and bonds actually haven't even been authorized yet. So it's, maybe I'm being a little belts and suspenders, but I just think it's worth having the protection for the treasurer, and this vote will effectively do it. You're authorizing the treasurer to proceed with some amount of refunding, or some of all of these bonds, and so on. So that's, this vote will, it mirrors what you're going to see when you take the formal vote, except the formal votes can be much longer, but you're going to recognize a lot of the same language with all the particulars when the formal vote comes. This is simply saying, we understand there's a refunding proposed, and we authorize the treasurer to proceed.
Seems straightforward to me. I first met Clark, what was it, 30 years ago? We worked on some bonds. Clark wasn't gray, and I wasn't gray back then. I know, over the years, he's done a great job for the town. Is the half, would you say a half a million dollars, that's over the refunding period?
It probably is about $700,000. It'll be over about a 12-year period.
Period.
Yeah.
So it's nice savings.
So it's all exclude different prop, two and a half.
Yeah. Seems to be a good time, because rates, I think, are going to be heading up, so.
We're, we're, we're hurrying.
Yeah, I don't think they're going to go lower than that. Yeah. Yeah, it's the time to go.
Yeah. And particularly, rates start getting very erratic when you hit the November schedule, because you have broken up weeks, and volume in the market gets erratic, and you get in December, people rush to market, and rates get really up and down, and I think we're still, the market seems to have adjusted, and I suspect it has adjusted to the last rate hike, and we're going to be hopefully well ahead of the December one, if in fact there is one.
So do we have a formal vote, the resolution before us?
It's in your packet.
Oh, the packet, yeah. I move approval of the resolution as presented to the board.
I'll second.
That was made by Hal and seconded by Dave. Is there any further discussion on the matter? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all your work.
We'll be back.
Do you want to sign everything after, and when we go to executive session?
We can just sign it then.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, 7:15, two minutes away.
No, it's not a public hearing. I don't think we have to make.
And they're here.
All right. So item number two is the Beagle Club change of manager. G. Reed and possible votes. Who from the Beagle is here?
In your packet is your application for change of manager. Gordon Reed is going to be the new manager. It's coming up now, and there are other people that are on the board in the audience, if you have any questions for them. The application is complete.
Okay. Is this taking over for the, what was it, the bar manager?
The bar, yes, it's the bar manager.
Which was?
Christine Nelson.
All right, emailer. I really don't have any.
While we thumb through this, tell us about yourself.
My full-time life, I work for the State of Rhode Island. I've been an employee for the State of Rhode Island for 26 years, when I was younger.
I'm going to hold that against you.
Did I say where I was employed by the state? I mean, I enjoy attending bars. It's something I did when I was younger, you know, as we all did. We worked in restaurants and whatever. It's something I always wanted to get back to, and now that I'm at a different point in life, I started attending bar in a couple of different places, and this opportunity came up, and, you know, it seems like a good fit.
And you're familiar with all the, like, rules, restrictions, as it comes to the bar, and the entertainment licenses?
Yeah, Suzanne's been very helpful with that.
Okay.
Do you like beer?
I resist. Kavanaugh. Had to have the Kavanaugh, Jack.
It needed to happen, I think.
Just for the record, I'm a member of the club. I don't think that requires recusal, but.
As long as you're not an officer.
No. So, my, actually, two of my neighbors are members of the Beagles, so.
I own a Beagle.
Huh?
There'd be at least one Beagle at the Beagle Club.
I did want to add, I forgot to mention this, that I do have to go to Rhode Island in order to get the quarry done through Rhode Island. It has been mailed out. I haven't received it back yet. I don't anticipate seeing any issues, but I will hold it until I get that back.
Mr. Chairman.
That's not going to stop you from approving it.
I'd make a motion that we approve the change of manager application, specifically placing Mr. Gordon Reed into that post, depending upon a successful and positive report, please, in Rhode Island.
I'll second.
Ooh, look at that.
Wow.
It happens.
I don't know who got the second out of that one.
It's up to you.
I'm going to give it to Hal. So it was made by Tim and seconded by Hal. Is there any further discussion on the matter? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Congratulations to me.
Good luck.
And once I have it signed, I'll send it out to you. I'll either call you, you can come pick it up, or you can, I can mail it to you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we're on to item three, which is accept deeds for Stonewall Court, Darling Way, and Brandywine Circle with possible votes.
Good evening. Mr. Kandov, how are you? You may recall, at this past annual town meeting, we had two warrant articles that pertained to accepting roads as public ways, and those roads were Darling Way, Stonewall Court, and Brandywine Circle. So in your packet, we have deeds that were prepared by Town Council and with the assistance of Town Council, that's land use counselor, and we also got the signatures of the presidents of the companies that are now defunct or dissolved. We also have received hold harmless agreements in the event there's some kind of claim from the defunct company or dissolved companies. So that's all been done and taken care of. Planning boards reviewed it. They recommend that these be accepted as public ways, as we discussed last fall, and these have been laid out by the board, so it's just a matter of submitting, signing, voting to sign the deeds, and filing them at the registry.
Seems straightforward.
So I'll move that we accept the deeds as presented.
Second.
It was made by Mike and seconded by Dave. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Phil.
Appoint employee insurance retiree rep and possible vote.
If you could please appoint Lynn Gaskell as the retiree representative for the Employee Insurance Advisory Committee. She was on the committee previously as the school teachers' union rep. She has since retired, and now is going to fill the vacancy for the retirees.
Mr. Chairman, this is an excellent appointment. Lynn's a key, key part of this group. She has a familiarity with the health insurance market and plan design that is very helpful in the retail and to unions.
Works for me.
So with that, I'll make a motion to appoint Lynn Gaskell, the Employee Insurance Advisory Committee retiree representative, for a term ending June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Made by Tim and seconded by Dave. Is there going to require another appointee to backfill her position off of the teachers, or if they put someone else out?
You already made that.
All right, that's how you do it.
We are actually waiting for one other position to be filled on this committee, and that would be the school non-union employees, and I'm still waiting for them.
Non-teacher.
Non-teacher, yeah.
Okay.
What did I say, non-employee?
Non-union.
All right.
You know what I mean.
Close enough.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, which brings us to item number five, the request for zoning change and article review warrant with possible votes. I do see that we have Lou and Tracy and Mr. Kandov, if you could hop up, too?
Oh, PowerPoint.
Do you have one for me?
We get handouts.
After you make. That's fine.
Louie?
Thank you.
Hi, Ted.
So, good evening. Tracy Sharkey, 3 West Street, and I'm here proposing a new zoning district, Lakeside Residential. You can kind of flip through the little presentation, but the major changes or the differences are going to be on the, towards the back.
So everything highlighted in yellow on the properties identified?
Yes. So there's going to be a proposed zoning map change, as well as a table of dimensional requirements and the use table. So this zoning change targets the Lakeside communities, the neighborhoods that have been established before 1970, the smaller lots, to allow for more reasonable setbacks and square footage requirements, pretty much to alleviate the need for zoning relief. So if you get to the current condition, and then the zoning change and post-change condition, the little chart, two pages from the back, you can kind of see right now, all the lots are in rural agricultural, which is 90,000 square foot, and then the setback requirements. If you have a lot 50 feet of frontage, you're really not going to be able to build a house with 25-foot side setbacks. So you're going to have to get relief for any new construction that you would propose on any of these lots in these areas. So there's various towns that are, have these types of special zoning for lake communities. This is more like those cottages, seasonal, and people are now inheriting them and, you know, going year-round. They want to make improvements, make specifically septic system improvements. That is going to be a big deal, protecting the water bodies, and, you know, moving the cesspools away from the water. I made a lot of notes, but, does anybody have any questions so far? Kind of the objective is just to have a more reasonable zoning requirement, square footage, frontage, setbacks for these specific communities, specifically Whiten's Res, Morris Pond, Ridge Trail, and Wom Lake. I would say the majority of the applications going through zoning board is all of those areas.
I know it's a lot of the lakes.
I would say 80 to 90 percent.
Muskrat Pond, that one kind of caught me off guard.
Those may or may not apply, but we kind of highlighted just kind of the flavor of where we're going with the proposal.
And we have 12 waterfront, we have 12 ponds and lakes in Douglas.
So you'd want to do this with all 12 of the waterfront zones?
I've identified at least 350 properties specifically that would fit into this relief, to be less stringent, to take the burden off of the taxpayer, to actually give us more taxes, because they can improve their property very easily, as of right, and, you know, it would just be all around better on all fronts.
And I've been on the zoning board now. I'm an alternate. I never took it full-time. I've been there three years.
Mm-hmm.
Never missed a meeting. Only one time I had my hip replaced, I missed a meeting, okay?
We'll choose that one.
Okay. Now let me tell you, okay, the only problem people have on the zoning board, and believe me, they're good people, okay, is this one woman I was leaving, over three, four meetings ago, her husband, and she's outside crying. And I go up there, I said, "What are you crying about?" And she said, "Louie, this is the sixth time we've been here, and we're no closer now than we've been before." Okay? Now, we have to make these things so the building commissioner can issue permits. That's what it's about. Am I right, Bill? If everything's meeting the way, he can issue permits. Right now, the guy's always teetering. He don't know. Now, you know, it's just, it's just an awful thing. I mean, everyone thinks, you know, well, this here, I've got, I've got four houses on the water, okay? And I'll tell you, you have to walk the line on the water. You have to walk that line. You have to be careful, you know, because you're leaving it up to the zoning board. We've got to have some kind of guidelines that says, "Hey, listen, you can do this legally," okay? We just can't go into the zoning board all the time. And I sit on the board, okay? Now, we get, we get in trouble, because poor people, they, you know, they live in this town, and they got a place on the lake, and they want to make it bigger, or they want to make it look better. Well, they can't do it, unless they attend six to eight meetings, which is completely ridiculous. I mean, it just takes so long to get anything, you know? It's like, well, you know, it's like, it's just something that we have to, you know, we feel that we tried to get the signatures, we missed by about four signatures or five signatures. So I said, "Well, we have, we have to go before the selectmen and see if they'll let us put it on the warrant." It's up to the people. So, we're, that's what we're asking for.
This, you know, and I'm sorry, I don't watch a lot of the zoning board meetings. So, my apologies, but has this been put in front of the zoning board to rezone it? Like, do they have any?
No.
It is not.
It was informally presented to the planning board, and we had CMR PC come in, do a preliminary look. They came in to the board. They said it would be, it would take about six months, and we would also have to apply for the district, the regional grant money, because we have already used up our money for rezoning, our map reconfiguration. So the board was favorable, I think, by an informal consensus on having CMR PC prepare something, but they said it would take six months.
All right, so.
This basically just recognizes the facts as they are, that these are small lots along these bodies of water, and it would encourage people to improve their property, and then from the health standpoint, to eliminate potentially what cesspools, and put in more up-to-date sanitary facilities.
Yeah. This special zone should have always been in place. Nobody has 90.
Recognizing what's already there.
Yeah, no one has 90,000 square feet and 200 feet of frontage in any of these areas. So this would have a more reasonable front setback, side setbacks, and just the ease of applying for a building permit, if you want to rebuild the house, the cottage that's there, that's fallen down, or not insulated, or not properly heated, that would allow them to just go for a building permit, meet the requirements, the setback requirements of the zone.
So, and what are the costs associated with this? If it goes through town meeting, I'm assuming there's going to be a cost for remapping and things like that? Do we know?
Well, this, this would be, I'm assuming, procedurally, it would have to go to the planning board. So the board, assuming you supported the concept, you would send it to the planning board, this petition, and that's what we would have. Now, the planning board can make recommendations for changes to it, but that's, that's what we're voting on, and that's what, what we would present to the planning board, and then they would carry, they wouldn't carry it, the applicant, or petitioner would carry it to town meeting. The, the mapping, we would rely on that map, and probably, at some point in the future, fix our map to match that.
Okay.
We could do some potential cleanup if we were approved tonight. We could do some potentially cleanup if we were approved tonight before the warrant was finalized. We asked town council before the meeting, and we could, if necessary, make any changes in the map, and then we could have a more accurate...
There would be some cost likely involved. We'd probably go through cartographics to have that done, and there would be some incidental cost.
So, nothing astronomical, right?
I don't think it'd be astronomical.
Not like tens of thousands of dollars, you know?
To Hal's point, though, we could take this and send it to planning, get their review of this particular document.
Well, you would have to before town meeting.
Right, but even if they wanted to strengthen it or tweak a couple of things, we could still vote on that document.
Recommendations, and they could make a form.
Yeah.
Should we get a second crack at it before town meeting, in other words? Wouldn't this be what, presented on the article at town meeting?
Correct.
Not the recommendations?
No, we can, I think we can, I think we can reserve this spot and revise it tonight. Yeah, because this request would come from the selectmen. So, we do have a little period of time I could work with you in tweaking it if necessary, if you agree with the general parameters.
Did you say there's 315 homes?
So, I would prefer to actually designate each parcel. So, what we're doing at planning board is, we've done in the past, this zone goes 425 feet, and then it just ends like halfway in a person's yard. So, I'd probably prefer to do each parcel and then list the affected parcels. I just quickly used the online and did a click, and I came up with 350. So, those would be highlighted and called out as a parcel ID number instead of trying to show it on that little, the little map at town meeting. I would probably specifically call them out because we're having that problem right now at planning board. That's why we're re, we're looking at the zoning, the split lot zonings.
So, I guess procedurally, like, if we move forward on this, we're allowing this as presented to us going onto the warrant? And this is how it would be presented at town meeting, correct?
Yeah, except, no, we can still tweak it prior to the signing of the, of the warrant.
Of the warrant, okay.
So, that gives us a little time if we're tying things up.
But if we tweak it, it becomes...
It's no longer as presented.
No. And it's no longer the petitioner's.
It's not a petition article because they did not have enough signatures for petitions. So, it's actually them writing a letter, asking you to put it on.
So, it would be a selectman's article.
It's a selectman's.
It would be a selectman's article.
It's my understanding.
I would think they would present it at town meeting and speak, answer to questions at town meeting. But what I would encourage you to think about is if we, if we can do it on the 16th, we can, if your next meeting is on the 16th, we might be able to come to some kind of more refined version. And, and then, when's the town meeting date?
13th.
We're planning on signing the warrant on that day too, the 16th, so that would definitely, we would want to have it done by then.
Rich, what's the timeframe before town meeting? We have to have, well, it's within...
Two weeks.
Two weeks, 14 days.
You have to have it posted within two weeks before.
So, we can meet that from the planning board's perspective too, so for the public hearing.
So, that would give every input from planning board and give the chance to the map to be refined a bit.
And if we choose, if this, we run into objections, we don't even have to take it up, right? Town meeting, we, since it's our article, we can pass it over?
Because that would be asking for, Tracy, you or Lou to actually present it at town meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Someone from our group, not you guys.
Because I don't want to stand up there during the headlight, like, going...
Yeah, no, I'm not sure what this is about. Yeah, no.
All we're doing is presenting it to the town to see if they want it.
We're allowing them, yeah, well, yeah.
But we can pull it as Tim said, correct? Because it's our article.
No, actually, can we, Rich?
Well, once it's on the warrant, it's on the warrant.
Okay.
And if you wanted to dispose of it, you would be, someone would be offering a motion to indefinitely postpone, further study, defeat, something like that. But once it's on, you have to make a motion to do something.
To do something with it.
Okay.
I'm in support of putting it in.
You have any input on this, Mr. Ward?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask council a question?
You can.
Mr. Bowen, is, I know the process is that this would be referred to planning for its review. Is there any limit to the number of boards that the selectmen can send it to for an opinion?
Oh, none at all.
Mr. Chairman, my only recommendation is that you also refer this to the Board of Health. The, the density contemplated is something I think should be addressed. These are environmentally sensitive areas. So, if the board wants to opine about the density of septics within a field, it's one of the things that environmentalists never think about. They just care about your lot and whether or not your septic is okay for your lot. But I think there's a, there's a time and a place for considering, so the building envelope will get bigger under this scheme, and you're going to go up two and a half stories, which, which could be bedrooms. So, that some thought needs to be given, I think, to the total capacity, especially near Wallem Lake. Just how many septics would you pile into that area and consider them all to truly be working?
Oh, excuse me. We have a septic now that she's been working on for years, and we handle, we saw quite a bit of them, especially in the water. After we get through process, after the septic gets through process in the water, the septic puts the water back into the lake, okay? A little different, right? Okay? In other words, you could build, you could have a thing now. We have a septic that you can have a cottage, and we have the septic right in front, right, that she did a lot of work on. And what happens is it's approved by the state, okay? Am I right? Okay? And it, it purifies the water and sends it back into the lake.
Yeah, no, they are that good. I just...
I mean, I've been around a long time, and to me, that's a...
I'm not making recommendations about septic technologies though, Mr. Tzino. I'm just saying that I think for the benefit of town meeting, if the Board of Health, which is your official body that looks at those things and regulates it, agrees with you and puts that out there, it's part of the conversation. But I think as far as this board is concerned, the extra referral is just doing due diligence to make sure that town meeting makes a well-informed decision.
Well, they still have to get Board of Health approval.
Of course they would on individual lots, sure.
Would Board of Health be able to look at this with planning in the timelines that we're looking at? So, because if this is going to move through as a warrant article presented by the selectmen, it needs to be done by the 16th.
I should think the planning board would be able to ask the health agent or some representative of the board to attend the planning board meeting and either as a quorum or as a single person and consolidate the whole thing in one meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, and keeping in mind, these lots are already established, so they have onsite sewer disposal of some kind. So, anything would be an improvement over what these more seasonal, they were built as a seasonal cottage and with a hand-dug cesspool.
True. How many of the 350 properties you identified do not have a structure on it right now?
Oh, I could get that number. I would, if I had to guess, I would probably say percentage-wise, 10 percent. Or less.
Have a building on it already?
Yeah, the main, yes.
Yeah.
No, that, that don't have, that are vacant. These are well-established. They, they were, you know, vacation homes, summer homes that maybe have been passed down from generation to generation, and then, you know, this generation has three kids or something, wants to improve the site. But there are the existing ones, I could probably get you any vacant ones, but I don't recall many.
But any more expansive use is going to have to be a modernized system of some sort, and I would...
Yeah.
Guess that the systems, that are most of the systems are pretty outmoded and wouldn't be approved today, probably.
Right. And anyone, well, anyone that is getting approved through the zoning board at this point is putting in a brand-new system.
Yeah.
So...
That's not cheap.
No. Or we can propose to run town sewer.
Probably would be upgraded in the end.
If that's possible. Town sewer. We could run some lines.
Some, some lines, all right, to the mothership.
To your concern.
I'm not touching that one.
We can do it.
Yes, we can.
Just keep up the building.
Exactly.
So, are we looking for a motion tonight to put this on the warrant? I'll make that motion, getting it, having it reviewed by both the Board of Health and the, obviously, it has to be reviewed by planning board, and having the ability to tweak at our next meeting.
And have it back in by the 16th.
Have it by the 16th, which is our next meeting.
Yes.
Second.
Made by Mike and seconded by Hal.
Maybe I probably should have asked this before. It was in my mind, is there any reason why the 320-some-odd people that are here would oppose this?
350 identified?
Well, yeah, the 350 homes, it's 10, 35.
I don't believe so. It's less stringent, it's going to make their lives better, it's going to make their dreams come true to...
It's going to make their properties more valuable.
More valuable, resale. They are probably going to have to pay more taxes, though.
If they do something.
Yeah.
If they improve, not simply as a result of this.
Correct, yeah. I was trying to be a little fresh, but, yeah, if there was any improvement, it would be streamlined directly to the building inspector for an as-of-right approval.
You can count there's going to be at least one person that'll cut their nose off to bite their face on it.
But I think Stacy's right, most people will be there. Because I've heard people who've had issues just wanting to put sheds up and not able to do it.
Yes.
Are you satisfied, Mr. Ward?
I am.
So, I have a motion that's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the matter? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Our pleasure.
Oh, thank you.
Ready, set, go.
All right. Second reading of the property use policy.
Now, you should go over your warrant. Make sure you don't have any other questions on the warrant.
Well, I'm terribly sorry, that's not on my agenda, Suzanne, so I will be moving down to when it shows up.
It says, "And review warrant."
No, too late.
Makes it hard to review when we don't have the copy.
Ooh.
It's you too. And I'm going to say this again, I think I'm going to start rethinking my retirement date.
Uh, that's on the warrant, that there is no retirement date.
We're going to add that article as well.
Or Jean.
Yeah.
Or Nick.
Speaking with me.
Oh, we might lock him in for 50 years.
Yeah, can we keep you for another 50 years, Chief? You got it in you?
I'd like to keep both, both.
If they stay, you'll stay?
Yeah.
Nice.
Thank you.
All right. Let us review the warrant. Eventually find it in the...
And Jean's here is, was right behind all the stuff we got from...
Listen, Mr. Binder.
Item isn't under there.
On number five, where it's supposed to be.
That's good.
Well, they're both left-handed, so, are you left-handed too?
No.
Oh, he's left-handed, so he has a hard time with the binders.
I have a hard time with a lot of things.
I just want to point out, my binder-less approach is the quickest.
I'm right there.
While we're searching, I want to go on record and say that I approve of Tim's new glasses.
Oh, thank you.
Very stylish.
I don't second that.
I think we're about a year and a half old, but, okay.
I'm not seconding that.
Thank you.
I know you've been tied up at the Central Mass Regional Planning Committee meeting so...
For far too long.
All right. So, we will review the warrant. Article one is FY 2019 budget transfers and amendments.
Feeling non-controversial.
I heard Tim say something about found money.
Okay, come on.
He just sat down.
Is that chair comfortable for you?
Not really, but thank you for asking.
This is the other one in the back.
It's okay.
Okay.
I don't think Tim and Jean are saying anything about found money any longer.
Ever again.
Four years. I have complete confidence that Tim would not have said that.
Fine.
Finance chairman, started it.
Yes.
Yes.
Take away all my fun, Jean, that's fine.
Well, Tim accused me of bringing it up at every meeting, and I'm trying to stay positive in 2018, so...
It's hard to learn amongst the cameras.
Yes.
All right, so, increase in assessors' wages by 1,500?
Would you like me to address some of these?
Absolutely.
Excellent. I should go to a microphone. Unless you'd like to speak? No, okay.
That was a non-verbal no.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Trying to hand off after the back has already run through the line. You're standing there with the ball.
I would like it noted that I did offer, though.
It's been duly noted.
I'll interrupt you when I feel like I need to.
Increase in assessors' wages, as most of you know, the staff here is very limited. We do budget a couple extra weeks a year, so this is just putting it back at that level. The increase in treasurer collectors' wages, one of our employees retired, and we did have, we were fortunate to hire a person that I think will be very qualified to do the job. Unfortunately, you know, you're replacing someone that's been here for a long time, and we want additional hours as well as we have to budget for the time that we had them overlap in training. So, that's going to be about 8,000. Increase in cemetery expense, there is an increase in the, the amount per mowing, but they also, Matt, I don't remember what they, they were looking to do, some small project there as well.
There's some, there's a lone pile there that needs to be spread, and I believe there's some, possible some hill reconstruction because there's been some erosion around one of the cribs.
Okay.
It's on the list of things to do.
We can't bury this one?
That's good.
Oh, boy. I'm seeing this person here.
Maybe.
Thought it was funny.
Increase in Norfolk County agricultural, this may go away. There's a possibility that one of our students has moved, which will help us. The reason why this was here is because they had to get an additional bus. So, once you add an additional bus, it's, the cost is allocated amongst the communities that use the service. But if we drop a student, then we will be able to absorb that increase. So, I will know probably by your next meeting. The increase in fire wages, ambulance wages, fire expense, and ambulance expenses, all relating to the contract negotiations. So, again, we'll have, we'll have numbers for that soon. I don't know where we stand in the process. Increase in debt expense, this is going to be not because the debt expense is going up overall, but it may change because of the refunding when we pay out the interest in the principal payments.
Okay.
So, we have to see...
Fullkeeping type of thing.
Yeah. Well, you know, when, when the payments are going to actually, are they going to be more in FY 19, or are they going to be shifting to FY 20? So, we'll know more about that. So, I put this as a placeholder. Overall, you heard, the savings will be about 700,000 remaining, estimated. That's where we're estimating now. We don't know a final. We're looking at the end of the month to actually go out. Increase in landfill maintenance, this is really a timing issue. We didn't do one of the mowings in FY 18, and they got pushed to FY 19. This is one where we budget very tight. Increase in total insurance and employee benefits, this is due to health insurance. We had a increase in census since the start of the school year. Increase in building department expense, I'll let Matt just speak to this one.
Well, there are two related items to increase the expense line, and then in the last item is decrease wages. We're looking to move money from the compensation schedule into the expense to take into account reorganization from staff to professional services.
Okay.
Decrease in library expense, this is really just, in my opinion, a housekeeping item. We had it budgeted as part of the main article for the annual town meeting, as well as the override. This is just taking away the amount that we had budgeted in both places. So, it's for that purpose only.
Somebody thought of it. So, Article two, is that really a bill for $30?
There is really a bill for $29.99 that needs to be approved by town meeting because it did not, didn't make it in time. We have, this is a... it did not, didn't make it in time. We have, this is a standing article in case we have vendors that come forward after the fiscal year has been ended, is closed, and, and encumbrances were, it's passed all the deadlines that we set forth, and it has to go before town meeting. So $29.99, that's correct.
And that's all we have for prior year bills?
At this time, that's all we have for prior year bills.
That's good. All right, Article three is the transfer of free cash to OPEB.
Article three and four is part of what I do in analysis when we have free cash. So I've submitted my balance sheet to the Department of Revenue. We're in process of finishing the audit. We look at where the funds close from, is part of the analysis of free cash. We had $17,500 closed from the health insurance retiree account, which is money that we had appropriated for the use of retiree health insurance for multiple reasons. That was not used. It will close at the end of FY 18, so it has been the practice that we transfer anything that closes from that account to OPEB, and that's the recommendation.
Okay.
Transfer from free cash to stabilization from the closeout from the insurance reimbursement accounts, that was for a claim, I believe, in this building that was not utilized by the end of FY 18. Again, we look at the source of the funds, and we are looking to transfer this stabilization for the use of more permanent fix to the problem.
All right, cable capital, really?
They asked for a placeholder. I don't think they've actually decided yet whether they're going to have this in or not. We're still waiting to hear.
You think we can get an answer from them by the 16th?
We have to get an answer by the 16th.
PVT assessment at 70,518?
This was the amount that we reduced from the appropriation at the annual town meeting. The other communities have voted to support their budget. We are putting this back.
All right, we thought that might happen.
We did, we did.
Did we come close with the other towns?
I think we've come close, because Matt's having meetings, so I think we've, I think that's progress.
I think we got their attention, at least.
Mm-hmm.
So that's good.
I would say that's true.
It was a good power play, though.
This is the second time we've done it.
I think both times it ended up the same way, is that the other towns went with it, and then we ended up having to, anyway, but...
But if the trend is going, where more and more people are paying attention, that is, probably has always been a five-year thing, anyway.
Mm-hmm.
We'll get there eventually. All right, so ratify the firefighter EMT union contract.
Mr. Chairman, we have talk scheduled for October 4th in the afternoon to hopefully bring this negotiation to a conclusion. We are going to observe the ground rules that we agreed to with the union and not talk about specific details. I will say that I think we're very close to being finished. It's a solid agreement, as it is currently proposed by the management side. All the members of the board have all been given a copy of the current offer that's on the table from, from the town. So we're looking forward to the union's feedback this week, and I'm hoping to leave that meeting with, with a final agreement.
Good. North Street Water Main work, from Maine to Charles?
Article eight and nine were requests from the water sewer superintendent to put on the town meeting. Unfortunately, I don't think we have any other documentation at this time.
No, right now, it's just a placeholder.
However, I believe his explanation to me was that these are needed in order for them to apply for grants.
Okay.
So that was the intention behind the articles.
And they'll have all the data we need, obviously, in time for when we need it, right? All right, and then Article 10 is the bylaw that we had discussed, making the Board of Selectmen as the licensing authority for marijuana. And, that's it, right?
Article 11.
Oh, I didn't see that one. Second page, too?
Being able to tax.
Oh, yeah, that's right, except Mass General Law, 64N.
Why is that listed as by petition?
No, it's Article 12 is by petition. I was getting ready for the petition, but it's not going to be a petition, so it'll be, it'll be just a zoning bylaw change.
For the lake.
For the lake, right.
Yep. Okay, is that fair and accurate as the warrant stands today with placeholders and fillers that'll show up in, in the timeframes needed? All right. So, now can I go on to the second reading of the property use thing, Suzanne?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Has there been any changes since the first reading, Matt?
No, sir.
Okay, moving on. The revenue enhancement discussion.
There'd be too much there at the moment.
That was my idea, too.
It's, I guess, in the form of a report, and just, it's called revenue enhancement, but the Selectman Davis asked that we put this on to talk about economic development initiatives, or what is going on around town, just so that the populace recognizes that we're making an effort towards, towards diversifying the tax base of the town. I think many are aware that the Planning Board has approved the development of a site on Main Street for a Dunkin' Donuts store across the street from Family Convenience next to the fire station. There may still be some more doing around site plan and other issues, but that is a commercial development that is making its way through the process. The Economic Development Commission is working alongside CMRPC, the Central Mass Regional Planning Group, to develop an economic development plan, and they've already had one outreach meeting, which I did attend, which was with business owners. We got a fair smattering of representation from different business owners in town. Maybe not the, what you ideally want. You want the room full, and you want everybody to be engaged, but there was a fair number of people, both from Main Street and from outside of Main Street, sharing their views about our processes and procedures in town, whether or not they form obstacles to the town or not. And the chairman, Mr. Malz, was, you know, very careful, taking notes, and will be processing that as part of the report. Now, I understand that tomorrow night is the public meeting, where the meeting will be televised, and the public is invited to offer comments on the same topic. Whether or not you're a business owner doesn't matter, if you've had any experience working through zoning, planning, CONCOM, any other town agency, it's your time to be heard on the matter, so that it becomes part of the plan. And we're going to do that again with town staff on October 16th.
Yes.
Late in the afternoon, so we won't interfere with the Selectmen's meeting, but it will occur right before, probably 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., for us to, you know, review internally what we think some of the issues are. Because not everybody's gonna stand up and be heard in front of the camera, but we know about those times when people have been confused or upset about the way certain process works. I think that's going to bring to conclusion that particular activity, and then there'll be a report that comes out of that, and it's just a beginning of, hopefully, what is a very practical, step by step. This is what we really, truly need to do, based on actual data driven by our people, and not by theory or, you know, the latest magazine article. We continue to monitor those events that are around us, and they are substantial. I'm sure folks in town have noticed the substantial construction going on in terms of site preparation on Davis Street. I don't know if it changes its name in Uxbridge or not, but right at the 146 ramp, right next to what looks like a Mass DOT property, and the animal hospital there, you'll see two driveways have been driven. What's important to us is that the town of Uxbridge has every intent to pursue Mass Works grant to bring natural gas across 146 to that location to service the industrial facility that's being built there. Our hope, of course, is that the commonwealth will consider the needs of Douglas going forward. If gas comes across 146, that's a really big deal. That's a major obstacle that's been removed from our development plans. Same is true for the town of Sutton, and we were somewhat more aggressive in our support for the application for Mass Works out of Sutton, because it is more in keeping with our long-term goals, which is to bring natural gas through North Bridge and parts of Sutton, across 146 to service their industrial park on Gilmore Drive, I think they call it Drive. And, you know, the conversation is, we hope that that terminus there is at Huff Road, which is north, the end of North Street on the Douglas side, at least give us the opportunity to march gas, that much closer to the sandpit at Pine. So those are the initiatives we've been working on internally here since we last had this conversation. They're ongoing. We continue our reach out to different businesses to see what kind of reaction we can get from them.
There was a, a printing business that was spotlighted in the Telegram. I was actually thinking I'd give them a call, maybe we could reach out to them and see if there's anything need. It's nice to see they're aggressive, and I think they have 14 employees.
Is that who we switched to for the annual town report?
Well, I don't even know who it is. Who is it?
The Precision, I'm trying to remember the name. I clicked the article. It was in Sunday's Telegram.
I'm using King, King Printing.
They took over the, the printing, was at St. Vincent's Hospital, and they've got, I think, four of their people on site to handle all their printing needs, so it sounds like something could be expanded to other facilities in Worcester, and maybe add some more jobs. Is there, in the works, anything officially on an 055 or older development in town?
You know, I've heard those rumors, too, Selectmen, and I haven't seen any plans submitted. And that's really where the rubber meets the road, when they come into zoning or planning with something. The property that I've heard rumored where that would go, in my opinion, is one of the best commercial possibilities for the town, so I would be with mixed feelings that we see that happen. As far as the, you know, construction is ongoing at the North Street, North Village as well, so that's continuing apace. And we'll see that, impact of that in new growth, probably this year. We certainly saw that impact on the building permit side, because we're talking about all revenues here.
Yeah.
I think it's fair to say we've had an unexpectedly good year, in terms of local receipts in the building side, because of that one large project, and they've, also the cannabis grow facility was a major part of that as well. It was a very large permit fee, and new growth along with it.
Well, that'll mean increased need of services, too, if it's the residential side. Chances are, there's kids moving into these new homes, homes being built, so there'll be a larger demand on service. That's why I like over 55 communities. Is that all we got?
It's...
It's a good...
It's a good start.
It's a start.
Well, as you drive into town off of Gilbo, I guess you realize the Pine Mountain is dwindling. We're working hard on that, and I've always said that it's one of the chief obstacles to real development in town, so keep digging.
School kids over the hills.
That's it. Move it.
All right. Yeah, thank you very much, Matt. So, approve minutes from the September 18th, 2018 meeting?
I'll make a motion that we approve those minutes, as per that.
I will second.
Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. All those in favor?
Aye.
Your report, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, I will try to make a habit now, every two weeks, actually, it's every week, because between the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, we'll be making reports about the different assumptions we're making for financial projections going forward for the town through the budget season, because we know that there are certain changes that we need to make. And the most recent report submitted to you and to the Finance Committee is in your packet, and I'll put it in a nutshell, without opining as to whether or not the cannabis grow facility is on track or not on track, really doesn't matter. The question presented to us is whether or not it is prudent to continue to include anticipated host community revenues in our projections, and if so, for what years. I'm gonna push everything, pretty much everything, back one year, and just to remind people of the timing, from the time the first seed is planted, if you will, to having a product that's marketable to a dispensary is several months. I think the minimum is four months, and, you know, not everything works out perfectly. The first time you make a Thanksgiving turkey doesn't necessarily end up being edible, so, you know, give them somewhere between four, and say, six or eight months before they have product. The town, under the host community agreement, will not realize revenues from the agreement until the dispensary has had product available for 12 full months. So we're really looking at somewhere between 16 and maybe 20 months before that very first possible payment could be made to the town under the host community agreement. The only thing that's set to happen before then is a one-time lump sum, $10,000 payment to the town for the purchase of a public safety vehicle, and I think it's specific, it says ambulance, the very, the day they get the CO, and they start operations. But from that point forward, it'll be 16, 20 months before. So I'm not going to include that revenue until fiscal 2021, at this point, looking ahead. It's a substantial sum of money, so it's something we'll have to make up, we'll have to have some plan for, including $150,000 less, looking ahead. So it's material, so I thought I'd put it out there, it's going to be in the model going right along. The only other thing I wanted to draw to your attention in terms of this aspect of my report tonight is that fuel prices are just all over the place. They're really quite different from what they were predicted to be just the last year, this time. Gasoline has been up substantially, and, I'm sorry, we, we projected substantial increases in gasoline prices, and stability, and diesel, and heating fuel, and just the opposite has happened. So we will make those adjustments going forward. Probably, in the final, final bottom line, we'll probably wash out mostly, but we'll continue to use the best sources available for projecting those prices going forward. The second part of my report is with respect to the designation grant that the town received as part of the Green Communities Initiative and the entire community compact effort. And you'll recall that it was 1,000, $145,930 in grant funds was the designation grant to the town of Douglas. At the time the grant was received, our best estimate of the cost of the streetlight project was right about 145,000. So we kind of figured, well, that's gonna be a one-for-one. Some very good things have happened. These grant funds leverage other grant funds, so the projects themselves are eligible for national-grade utility incentives as well as Massachusetts Area Planning Commission, MAPS-E, grants. So we actually are leveraging close to $180,000, $185,000 worth of projects with this $145,000 grant. The best part of the news is the actual cost of the streetlight project is gonna be closer to 109,000. So the bids came in nice and low, but we're confident with the stability of the pricing that's been offered, and we're also confident that implementation will be before the end of this calendar year. So as fast as we can turn purchase orders around with the suppliers, we'll be seeing those, the lights being switched out, and we'll start to realize annual savings that are estimated in terms of about $22,000 a year in electricity, just from that project. What that means, though, is that there's, there are designation funds that remain available. And it's my understanding, for the police chief is here, is that when we get grant funds, we have not typically come to the board for authority to change the way we plan to spend them. That's all well and good, I guess it's allowed under Massachusetts law, but I'm not entirely comfortable. I'd like the board to be apprised of what our plans are for unexpended grant funds that were, that were applied for under your authority. We have identified, along with the CMRPC staff that is helping us administer a lot of the paperwork on what's a complicated grant. We have the opportunity to address an existing problem, which is at the library building, a number of, so we cooled the building with mini splits, those little... those little, little room-by-room units that all kind of draw one or two condensers outside. And we heat the building with what frankly is an ancient peerless boiler and radiators. So the objective now is to, the mini splits themselves, condensers, compressors are not functioning properly. The thought would be to replace them with more energy-efficient units that do both heating and cooling. Leave the boiler in place only for backup in case of severe weather and to insulate, properly insulate the roof of the building. I don't think we'll get to the windows. The window work is a little bit more complex because there's a lot to do. But we feel like we can spend a fair amount of that money on that project and substantially improve a building in town that already has a system that's failing. So that's the first recommendation. The second, I'm not, the third, actually, so it's the library mini splits. The weatherization is number two. Number three would be to convert the lighting fixtures at the Highway Barn to LEDs. It has an immediate cost savings and that's the benefit of it. When the taxpayers of the town won't pay a dime for the fixtures, but they'll realize the savings in electricity. Normally, I would advise against putting any investment into a building that we hope not to have for too terribly much longer. In this particular instance, I, I don't feel like I can recommend to you that there's a specific timeframe which we can get that done. And if it's uncertain, then we have an opportunity to save close to $900 a year. And we should, that's, that's the certainty. It's the bird in hand.
Are we sure putting those bulbs in won't knock the building over?
They're lighter. I don't know.
These are interior lights, right?
These are interior lights and I think some exterior ones.
They put a roof on it recently, so...
Any reason we couldn't recycle them when we're out of that building?
I don't think there is. You know, we should be able to remove things like that. Those are, they're fixtures, but they're not permanently attached to the building. And then lastly, with the change left over, this building here runs semi-automatically. There's, there are timers and other settings down in the boiler that can be adjusted and a professional has to do it. And it's a couple thousand dollars that would allow us to cash out the designation grant, which would make us eligible for another quarter million dollars next year, which is the real objective. And I can say without hesitation, I think the lead recommendation, if we go forward with that grant application, is the roof of this building, which is still leaking. But more importantly, it's the second floor and you'd never know it. And so we're going to remind people that the second floor exists and there's hardwood floors up there and all the records of the town and there's water coming down. The roof of this building is configured with, with what's really ancient technology. It's a passive duct system that moves the air around in the building. It's moving heated air out of the building in the winter through those enormous ducts that you see on top, almost like a battleship main. There's, you know, getting air down to the lowest levels of the ship under the water. That's kind of how this place works. And it, it's a substantial expense just to close those perforations on the roof. So that would be the energy savings component. We would probably have to come forward with capital from the town for the actual membrane and installation and warranty. But it seems like a project that would leverage, you know, it's a $300, $350,000 project. We might be able to get a roof done for a lot less than that. We, we figure, it's Mr. Furno, Adam Furno's recommendation, we'll probably need a crane to get some of the stuff off the roof of this building. It's so big and so heavy and it's not going to come apart. So it's, it's a big project. But this is actually a very good building. And if we just take care of it, we can reduce the overall expenses for the town.
It's one of the things that we discussed doing during the two and a half override is the fact that capital improvement projects to our assets have been being neglected for years and you can't do that.
So this is a nice way of doing it?
Yeah.
So items one through four in effect are covered with the savings from the 109 and the Streetlights?
So a combination of the fact that we're able to leverage those other sources of grant funds for the same projects and what's left over from coming in under, under anticipated budget.
How certain are we for this? Another 250? Is that pretty likely?
It is a competitive grant from now on. We get these, you know, read between the lines conversations with the folks from DOE R who do this. The feeling from our initial meeting about the condition of the roof of this building, what it means for energy usage, was that we would be very favorably disposed. It all depends on what other towns come after.
It's competitive, right? We're in a good spot.
We're in a good spot. It's, it's a shame to say it, but we're so inefficient, we might win the grant. So the last thing I would have, I just, because I think that a lot of good work gets done and people don't get, well, actually, there's two things. We, we had a moment of silence for Reynado this evening and not everybody in town may know who he was. I had to obviously be educated on who he was. He was an EMT in this town for 25 years. And he and his wife were instrumental in keeping the EMT service going for a long time. And his untimely passing at the age of 77 was, is why we, and his calling hours were just today. So I thank the board for recognizing him. The last thing is, the good work that gets done is we've made huge strides in terms of our IT and the way we're running management information systems. And I just can't help but have so many good things to say about Dave Renaglia and Everlasting Designs for really figuring out that our network design here at Town Hall was, was poor. And we're probably, I don't think we're going to recognize savings. We're going to recognize so much savings from all of the foolish things that are going to be undone that we're going to be able to do it right without an increase in spending for MIS. So that's, that's the, I think that's the good news. I just found out in the last hour and a half. Charter finally responded to our, our negotiating position and that we've got one more term that we're going to have to work out. But we're probably going to be in a much better, much better position than we are right now. We're probably going to quintuple, actually not quintuple. We'll go from 30 megabytes of service to 500.
That's where we should be.
For the same price.
I give them kudos because they fixed terabyte bill.
When they fix terabyte bill, we'll be all set. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any old business? Seeing none, do we have any new business?
I have announcement.
Oh, jeez.
You didn't... Part of your management, may I speak?
Absolutely. It's all you.
I didn't hear it as part of your town administrator's report about World Smile Day being Friday. And I encourage everyone to do an act of kindness.
That means you, too.
On Friday?
Yes.
Immediately Town Hall is closed.
Some of us will be here. Some of us will be here.
Is that what you have? No?
That is what I have.
Well, thank you.
It's been 13 years since I interviewed with the town. I actually, I was telling Matt, I interviewed right before World Smile Day and I, I couldn't leave the interview without telling them. So, and they still hired me.
You like that day?
Do I like that? Yes.
That was a day that it was very fortunate for Douglas. We acquired you as our finance director.
And we've been smiling ever since.
We have been. Unless somebody says, "Found money," and then there's no more smiling.
Yeah. There's another term, too, but I know better than to mention it again. I was scolded when I said it the first time.
One, one thing I, let's see the chief here, and I don't want to put him on the spot, but I do want to reinforce my concern about Main Street. I was jogging down Main Street the other day, had to cross the, the road and literally it was four cars. And, you know, it was, it was eye-opening how bad the drivers are on that road.
Yeah, we have spoken with Mr. Wardrick last week. We, we've had the trailer out on both sides. You've probably seen it. It's also doing traffic studies for us. So at some point, when you guys have a later agenda, come up and give you the statistics on that.
So we're also going to put laws in place to prevent Selectman Bonin from jogging down Main Street.
Right.
Wow.
Financial stability of the town at the same time.
I believe that created some of the traffic with you jogging down Main Street.
I know we like to go to the AAA no death.
Death being involved.
The AAA no deaths in it? All right. Mr. Menard from Oktoberfest, does he want to say anything before we shut down?
Yeah, come to Oktoberfest, it's Saturday.
How's the weather look?
I'm not talking about it.
No discussion, aren't you?
Nope, I'm not jinxing that one.
Yeah, nope.
It'll be nice.
Is there any other new business? Other than go to Oktoberfest, rain or shine?
Beer tastes good in the rain.
Yes, it does. And it tastes good in the sunshine, is what you do like.
I like beer, Senator.
So I'd be looking for one of your very special motions.
All right. We'll make a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of litigation and then to leave executive session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Made by Tim, seconded by Mike. Roll call vote, please.
Mike, yes, aye.
Tim, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Hal Davis, aye. Dave Cortez, aye.